Oh, no.
And that's out on the street. I don't... That part is...
Yeah, that's scary.
You see, they kept in the top for a minute.
They're wired for sound.
Is it all right?
Funny, the reason I say they were scared off. Right there on the back of the... Cause they can pull drawers and all that stuff. Right on the... Whole thing. Almost take fifty quarters, isn't it?
Yeah.
Never such a dad. In the living room. It's going cable. Random DVD player in the box. Hadn't even opened up yet.
Well, it's a year ago.
My other gun cabinet in the other room.
Oh, you had other guns?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right with gun cabinet, rifles and shotguns.
Sounds like it's an inside job, Pete.
Well...
Sounds like it's an inside job.
No, it isn't. I think they got scared off the way they left things.
Well, a year ago...
You still go to the PTA meetings?
This was there before this one.
Yeah, that's it. Lisa's just not there.
One of your kids were there.
One of them was.
Just went to his room, grabbed what they wanted.
Did it, Pete? The way Steve left everything away for us. I'd like to say why. All the drawers in my bedroom.
Which one? The one that... Where the Dr. Suits thing? That's fine. Those kids were...
Both in the drawers and Gail's bedroom.
Little kids. I missed the... My kids being with me.
Am I to taken something out of there? I don't know. You know, I did check the little... Diamond.
Still there, Joe.
I wanted to get that diamond if I could have it for fifteen bucks. That was stolen. That worried me. But apparently, you know... Makes more than I'm not finding. Like, why don't...
Let Jeff know so he can...
On an automatic... I guess they're like... They got scared off. And... My other son, he was there about nine thirty. He forgot to turn the heat off down the shop. It might have been just enough until they saw lights coming in the eye.
Oh, maybe.
Boom, they...
Cause he would've went down bad.
Down the shop.
Not good.
And when you pull up in front of that shop, it's hard to see up in the eye. You can't see up in the eye.
Right. That's not good.
How'd they do yesterday in the round robin?
They won.
Was Noah upset about the loss?
Um, nah.
Nah? He's philosophical about the...
He said the coach took it harder than they did. But he, Riley, came home sick, so...
Oh. Oh, wow, wow.
Got you.
Your father's there hanging out?
No, Tony's there.
Oh, the week we go there.
Oh, wow.
He has to be in New York for the rest of the week, so...
So, they leave early in the morning, I think?
Yeah.
Where, New York? Upstate New York? Awful New York?
Albany, I think.
Oh, yeah. Albany's not too bad. I haven't been there for years, but that's not a really bad drive.
You know, it's all strange, though. Down in Washington, you see Maryland. They get snowbikes all tied beside the road. Everywhere you look out through the field, it's all white. It's all white.
Oh, they still have it on the ground?
We all do.
Cause it looks like the White House lawn is all green.
They probably shoveled it.
They probably shoveled it all off.
Taxpayers' dollars at work.
Well, this was last Wednesday. It might have... But then you get up in the... Northern... Southern Connecticut.
How's the Kathy Haslam School raffle move?
Southern Massachusetts.
Slow.
Like it is here, everything...
I think we've only got about...
Usually, it's the opposite way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have four dates. We have two...
Well, I don't mind. I know the snowmobile people are upset.
They're coming up country.
In the skiers.
You're raffling off.
But they're saying in...
I will.
Yeah, the snowmobiles aren't there in numbers.
Five bucks, right?
Uh, no, a pack. Five chances for twenty bucks.
Wow.
Five dollars a piece.
Okay, five. For how many tickets?
Four chances.
No, but...
Oh, there's four different games. You can win like four times.
Four tickets per game.
Four tickets per game. You know what I'm saying?
I bought mine already.
One thirty-seven. I think it's about one thirty-seven a pack.
The Red Sox raffle tickets. Sorry, I bought mine.
A set of fours worth about one hundred and thirty-seven.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I just gotta make sure he turns it in.
Would be a great deal.
Yeah.
Oh, I'll bug him.
Tell him you're gonna do inventory on his... Make sure mine goes in there.
I put him on the spot the very first day I got him. I'm like, oh.
That must be why that... I think he got them that day.
That ninety, I saw you on that.
Not that.
Let's not have a bad meeting.
That's what I was hoping too, cause I'm just kind of been night, sleepless night. Even worse day, so... I was rather...
But you were up with Riley vomiting?
Yes. Twelve, two, four, six.
Oh, my.
Yeah.
Did you even try to go to bed? Or did you sleep on the couch?
No, I'm a light sleeper, so as soon as I hear him, his feet hit the floor, I was up in the bathroom with him.
Oh. He is the one who gave me the... What you on how easily he vomits. Was he the one?
Yes. He has a weak stomach, too. He's not gonna be my doctor.
You ought to see...
Get plenty of paper.
I went to someone that used to teach at a school teacher down the bar. On Sunday, they took me about thirty miles north of where they live. This guy bought an old Walmart store that they had... And he's got his private automobile collection in there.
Wow.
He must have at least fifty Chevrolet Corvettes.
Wow.
Every one that they've made from fifty-four right on up through in every model. There must have been two hundred cars in there.
My goodness.
People get to go in or you pay...
Pay twelve dollars and fifty-seven.
Wow.
He's a smart man.
He is, yeah.
Fifty, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven Chevys. Muscle cars. There's not a speck on them. They're not scratched. Every piece of chrome's been redone. They're completely restored. Some of them are original, some's got Alton Block engines in them, some of them got other type of...
Wow, by collection.
At least two hundred, at least two hundred cars in there.
That's new?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't have time to... Cause I wanted to stay in.
To see that many cars in that one school.
They do it by area?
Uh, normally, but today they broke up into schools so that they could give me their suggestions for professional development for next year. This meeting and last meeting, they broke up by schools. Normally, they break up by contact.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Talk about that... This is what we're talking about? My question on that, I was gonna ask.
About his. Fifty-seven Chevy up to Reed Field.
They're watching this thing on TV, okay? What's nice? Can they ask a question?
Cut it up Reed Field.
Really? They can send in questions too.
He has to go up to the airport and get gas.
We normally spend like five or ten...
Only runs on aviation fuel.
Oh, really?
Dollars or something like that.
Gets about three miles in the gas.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Why the question?
You don't take it out, but...
They can ask a question to the big...
That's what he used to do for living with.
Yeah, okay.
Oh.
Rick Stiggins. Instead of them emailing somebody who's spinning off his work, they can actually get a hold of him.
Guy, the guy.
They can...
Love that.
Yeah, so it's... And what they can do is that allows them to see him actually present it, not one of the little...
Yeah, fuckies. I was saying, I thought that sounds like a great thing, but that was my only question was can they... Talk if they had a question, but you know, you're watching something, but Jake...
Yeah, no, they can chat with that person and they can chat with everyone taking the course.
We're coming at... I think we have a minute and five seconds or something like that.
Good idea. You say it's like the seven thousand dollars?
A lot of money.
Yeah, cause you say like seven...
Thousands, yeah.
Thousand dollars for gadgets to come in?
Oh, yeah, last year we spent four or five... Well, when you have to pay travel.
Yeah.
Costs. That money right there, probably one person's trip, couple nights in a hotel. Cause they normally have like... When they send a agreement, they usually have, you have to put them up in a hotel, you have to provide this food and all that stuff.
They all have a standard too, I meant.
The better quality the person you get, the more expensive.
Yes. Yeah? That sounds like a good idea, though.
Yeah, it's been good at the middle school.
So far? The middle school? Seem to like it?
If they miss a meeting, like if you miss a professional day with that big speaker, you can go to that and see the...
Yeah.
So they can do it on their own time.
I like that.
We're coming down to ten seconds.
And this is that.
Call to order, the regular Monday, March eighth, school committee meeting. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Everybody is here. First thing we have is consideration of action on the minutes of February first, February eighth, and February twenty-second of two thousand and ten. Recommend the minutes of February one, February eighth, February twenty-two be accepted as presented barring any errors or omissions.
Make a motion.
Moved. Reed. I'm sorry, I'm laughing, we missed you. Other people quickly jumped in. Second?
Second.
Austin, any discussion? Any errors or omissions? All those in favor, so signify. Five, zero, thank you, it's a vote. Are there any adjustments to the agenda tonight?
Uh, there are actually two. On item seven A, where it says Chris Morrow, it's supposed to be Ken Healy, and he's out sick today, so he'll be presenting at our next meeting. And under item seven C...
Take Chris out altogether?
Yeah, take out of that report.
He's off?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And under seven C, Kate is out sick, and so Carlene will be doing the building update for the community school. We tried to do an assistant principal theme, but...
And they're sick, you checked?
Yeah.
Um, okay. Good news and recognition. Mr. Moreau, Lisbon High School Winter Sports. He has something in a Walmart bag. Thank you. Special Ed?
Thank you.
Printer?
Is...
I like the gray one.
A library printer. High school's moving up.
Well, it's definitely my pleasure to stand in front of you this evening to talk about the wonderful winter season that we had at the high school. Last time I was before you, it was to recognize Jen Fox and the Drama Club for getting off the ground and running. And I'm happy to report that as of this past weekend, they represented our school district exemplary. Well, they went there and absolutely took it apart. They had two of our students, Sean O'Reagan and Ben Verrell, win all cast nominations and all festival cast nominations. And we also had a specialty judges commendation for outstanding assembly for a group of students participating. It was wonderful to see Lisbon, the triumphant return to the one act. And there is no question in my mind that she is going to take that program to very, very high levels. So, thank you for your support of them. They really truly appreciate that. What I did for you was kind of give you a summary of what took place. We had an outstanding winter season across the board. Our boys basketball team had a second team, all Mountain Valley Conference, Scott Eck. And honorable mentions were Steve Obie and Christopher Whitney. Then the boys also won more than they have in recent memory. But what I'm very happy to say is Coach Hall had that team competitive. And that and the hunger that those kids showed on the playing surface was apparent to all of us. I know that Mr. Ramesh and I sat next to each other on many a game and commented time and time again at how those boys were just... They weren't gonna give up. And there's a lot of pride there, and it was nice to see. Girls' basketball had an outstanding year, which culminated in them taking a trip to the Expo for a quarterfinal matchup. Didn't end up the way they had hoped, but they did have a true end of the season. First team Mountain Valley Conference, as well as Player of the Year for the Mountain Valley Conference was Renee Moore.
Wow.
Second team, all NBC, was Amber Cludier, and I will mention Jessica Campbell. Wrestling, I have an update from New England, which they went to this past weekend. We did have Marcus Boubar finish fifth in New England, which is an unbelievably high finish for us, for a main wrestler. Very, very proud of Marcus. I included the list of things that happened with wrestling. We had a number of students make it to the Hundred Win Club, which is, in some circles, they say the equivalence of a basketball player making or scoring a thousand points. And to have that many tells you the kind of quality of program that we have. We also had individual, as well as individual regional, as well as state champions, which are listed below, as you can see. And then it was announced over the weekend that Marcus Boubar was named to the All-State Wrestling Team. And the two thousand and ten Portland Press Herald Coach of the Year was Mark Stevens, which is another great honor for us. Being a smaller school, it tends to be a lot more of the attention is paid to the Southern Maine schools, the Nobles, and the Massachusetts. So, to have, to win seven out of ten state championships is quite remarkable. And it's our third year in a row as state champions. So, truly remarkable considering that we didn't field a full team, meaning we didn't have a student competing in every weight class. So, to win as convincingly as we did was, says something for the quality of athletes that we put on the map, that's for sure. Under cheering, on the next page, we had NBC All-Star nominations. Emily Martin, Kelsey Peet, and Hannah Hall all received all NBC honors. And the team had a disappointing showing, in their opinion, at regionals. Missed qualifying for states by tenths of a point. But the following weekend brought it back together, and it shows the kind of quality of program that Coach Doughty has put together. They went to the Capital Cheer Classic, and they were the division and overall grand champions of the Capital Cheer Classic. So, though their team lost, they didn't qualify for states, that didn't deter them from remaining a team and supporting each other and supporting the program. And they went and they raised the roof, literally, as cheerleaders. That picture does contain the SUG athletes as well, who also finished very strongly and had an incredible winter season. And the final picture that you see in the packet is I asked Coach Genal to be here this evening, cause I have to make a presentation to him. And had I told him that this was going to happen, he would not have come, cause he thought about that. And I appreciate that more than he would ever know.
Looking at the exit, too.
Don't you stand up, Coach. Every time that you try to pay this man any sort of compliment about what he does with our student athletes, he quickly shuns the limelight and pushes it back on the kids. I watched him do this time and time again in girls' soccer. And he represents our school with class and dignity. Watched him do it all winter long in basketball. And once again, shuns the limelight for the betterment of the team. You couldn't ask for more. This is exactly the kind of coach that we want to have in our program. And the Mountain Valley Conference decided that they were gonna take it upon themselves to agree with me. A few times, they agree with me. But I'm happy to present to Coach Genal on behalf of the Mountain Valley Conference and framed by our lovely art department and Ms. Mallett, the Mountain Valley Conference Coach of the Year Award. So, I'm happy to present this to Jake tonight. He now will refuse to eat lunch with me for the year. But that's okay, because sometimes you have to do things that you don't necessarily wanna do.
Would you like to make a speech?
That's my presentation. It has been a remarkable fall and winter. I'm excited about the spring, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any that you may have at this time.
Anybody have questions? Comments? Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Wonderful season.
Mr. Moreau did not need the microphone, but it is not plugged in.
Oh, it's not plugged in.
That's gonna be heard on the televised.
He's also... Yeah, he's...
That's gonna be my drama. Pardon me?
Drama background.
Did it get plugged in now?
No, they're using the microphone on the front of the camera that they'll hear us.
Oh, okay. So, we don't worry. Now, reports from administrators and directors, and I guess Mr. Lambert, you are first. You're talking about building update and safety.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's my pleasure to talk about our building update here at Philip W. SUG School in Lisbon. I'll start it from the top in terms of drills and evacuations. There were no safety drills or evacuations since our last building report. One of the things that I'd like to do in this building update is to talk a little bit about our safety committee. Myself, I am the chairperson for the safety committee. So, I'd like to share some information with you. In the fall and spring, we have quite a bit of safety drills and evacuations. We practice those. In the wintertime, we don't have as much. So, I did wanna take the opportunity to share some valuable information about our safety committee, to give you a date, which is on there, for our next safety committee meeting, so much that someone from the school committee, who represents the school committee for that meeting, can attend and learn about all the great things that we're doing as a committee. So, to start from the top. This school year, the Lisbon School Department received a grant for eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty cents for eight portable radios and a full-scale evacuation drill for the fall of two thousand and ten. One thing I'd really like to mention, and this is a lot of good news and recognition, is Detective Bernie McAllister of the Lisbon Police Department deserves much credit for his work in obtaining valuable grant money. As grants become available, Detective McAllister and the safety committee will look to pursue safety needs and opportunities. So, the aforementioned grant of eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty cents to buy those radios was all at the work in the hands of Detective McAllister. The safety committee itself plans to prepare for future grants and will continue to work and to increase amounts in grants as they become available. Discussions are currently underway with the members of the safety committee to assess the safety needs for each building. Our district safety committee, again, meets monthly to discuss issues and make plans. Our next meeting is Friday, March twelfth, at nine AM. And we do meet at the superintendent's office in the conference room at the old Lisbon Elementary School. So, we encourage you to come then. Just to move back one moment, when we talk about future grants, this safety committee and keeping this together is chiefly important in obtaining these grants. We have fire, police, school department administrators, our superintendent, Green. We're all there to meet and discuss items and topics that really are important to our schools and the safety of our kids. My belief is that this committee takes it a step forward with Detective McAllister and the people that are involved to really seek out some additional monies. I know at the middle school in particular, to kind of bring it back to our building. The middle school in particular, those radios will come in very handy. They'll actually be on the same wavelength as the high school, or we'll have the potential to do that. So, our campus will be more secure as a result of that eleven thousand some odd dollars that was obtained through a grant. So, again, March twelfth, nine AM is our next meeting. To move on, in terms of news also in our building, our Science Olympia team competed at the state competition, and they performed very well. The coaches are Mrs. Marilyn Curtis and Mrs. Jennifer Robitaille. Overall, the team took home the following honors. Twenty-six overall medals. Very impressive. A third-place trophy for the entire team. And the two, Ms. Robitaille and Ms. Curtis, the two coaches, took out the, took home the Outstanding Coaches Award for the entire state competition. So, to say the least, the Lisbon School, Philip W. SUG School was represented very well at the state competition. We're very proud of them. And this happened to be just last weekend. So, just to mention a few things. Some examples of the competitions that our kids participated in to earn those twenty-six medals were based on anatomy. One event called Battery Buggies. Another one called The Right Stuff, where the kids constructed flyers and used physics. A pentathlon, in which the kids competed in an obstacles course for the mind, some question and answers. And then correct questions would move kids on to the next exercise or activity. They also, there was an activity called The Rhodes Scholars, and it dealt with mapping. One thing that's really unique about our Science Olympia program is that we include all kids. And I told Ms. Robitaille and Ms. Curtis I mentioned that. Some of the schools are very selective in the kids that they select. They might bring small teams. Here at Philip W. SUG, we brought thirty-five kids. And they were from all shapes and sizes, all different types of kids with an interest in math and science. And those kids performed very well. Like I had said, we took home third place. And they worked all year on it, and the kids really enjoyed it. So, one thing we really pride ourselves in at the middle school is participation. So, we really encourage those kids all year to participate, just like we do with our other clubs and activities. So, lastly, I'd like to talk about our co-curricular athletics that had ended for the winter season. Our cheerleading team had a very successful season, as mentioned by Mr. Moreau. Matter of fact, our cheerleading team, in each competition, I believe, took first place except for one. And don't quote me on that. The one competition that we maybe did not take first place was when we competed with larger schools that were just a separate division. So, every competition that our cheerleaders participated in, in their division, they took first place. So, that's something to note. In terms of basketball, our girls and boys basketball teams had a very successful season. The kids had a great time. The coaches did some great work. The coaches did some great work with our kids all season long. Lastly, co-curricular athletics and academics, clubs are still in session, many of them year-long. And we're having a very successful wrestling season as baseball, softball, and track begin on March 30th. So as soon as wrestling ends, there's a weekend, and then we begin our spring sports, hopefully outside, most likely inside, weather pending. And we're really looking forward to that. And that should recap the building update from Philip W. Segs Middle School.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments?
I have a comment. I know that Mrs. Curtis and Mrs. Robitaille put in hundreds of hours of volunteer for that Science Olympiad, which is very, very appreciative. And I know the kids also competed against freshmen, high school freshmen. So to come in third against freshmen is a pretty good honor for all those children that were involved.
Absolutely. It's impressive, and some schools do bring their freshmen, some bring their, a selective team based on their performance. But we put everybody in there, and we did really well. And thank you to the PAG for donating $300 for their admission to that competition. And I meant to mention that, and that's very much appreciated for our kids.
This is just their second year participating, isn't it?
Yes.
At the middle school level, which is outstanding, too.
Absolutely. And matter of fact, there are a lot of connections. I was talking with Ms. Robitaille today between, when finding out about this information about over the weekend, there are a lot of connections to some of the curriculum that the kids are doing in seventh grade science in particular. She gave me a good example of how they're studying anatomy. And sure enough, what they did was they selected some kids from the seventh grade to participate in that exercise. The kids prepared, and they made real connections in a competition with what they were learning in the classroom every day. So it was really nice to see, and our kids did do very well.
Which is a good way to make learning be really real.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, Mrs. Iverson, for your building update, please.
I don't think she's missed a meeting all three years. It had to be tonight, right?
That's okay. It's going around at your school.
Well, actually, no, her son had 14th extracted today.
Oh.
She's home being a mom.
Oh.
Got to let her know.
Yeah, the extractions are not good.
Okay, things are humming along quite nicely at LCS. Friday night was Dr. Seuss's birthday party. And thank you, Mr. Karen, for coming and being a reader for us.
It was fun.
Good. Glad you had as much fun as the kids did.
Oh, yeah.
We had six readers, and I'm not going to go over their names. They're written in the report for you. We had 87 students, and I'm sorry, but I lost track of the adults. So it was about 50 adults with them all. And they came in, listened to some Dr. Seuss books being read, had birthday cake and punch donated by the PTO, and we had a lovely time. It was a great turnout, and it was real low-key. The kids just came to school. They love to be in the building at night.
They do.
Our chess club had a competition over the weekend. We had 11 fifth-grade students who went to UMO to compete. They did not earn any group accolades, but it was truly a learning experience for all of them. There were about 300 chess players there. And I think they were probably shocked by the number. We did have one fifth-grader, Noah Williams, who won best showing by an unrated player. Because it was our first competition, none of us had ratings. But he won two and a half out of four matches. And so he came home with a small trophy, which was nice. And one of our fourth graders had actually gone to a competition last weekend, and she was one of only 17 girls at the competition. And she represented us very well. So as a fourth-grade girl going into that situation, I give her lots of credit. We are in the process of doing our mid-year progress monitoring. The grades two through five have completed their January NWEAs. And if you remember from last year, those scores aren't rated in with our fall and spring scores, but we can get scores from them and still work with the data. It just doesn't figure in when we do our historical data. Students who aren't meeting the standard also had our benchmark assessment in reading, and we're working with those to support our RTI and our grouping of instruction. And then the last item at the bottom, just an update for you on our February substitute report. We needed 52 days of substitutes, and we actually only hired 1.5.
Wow.
Our support staff is incredible.
Are they getting tired of it?
Yes, they are very tired. We try to cover their duties at noon time. Anybody who's possibly available to do a duty tries to relieve them of that. But it is definitely, it's been a hard year for them. But they are troopers, every one of them. They come, they check the whiteboard, they say, "Where do you need me today?" They have the most positive attitudes. And the teachers who give up having ed tech support in their room have been equally as positive. We try to work out little deals if they've got a project going on, you know. "Could you take mine less, lower down on the priority list today? I could really use her." And the classroom teachers are doing what they can to make sure they're well-prepared to have someone just walk in and take over. So it's really a group effort by everybody, just trying to address our budget needs.
Any comments or questions? Please, I don't know that I speak for all of us, but I'm going to. Please thank them, everybody, for being willing to pitch in in this very difficult situation. I'm sure it's appreciated.
And when they do take an ed tech out of the classroom, they're taking away from another child.
Yes.
Or a few children, so.
Yes, and we juggle people around, and everybody's flexible. You know, we just really try to share the burden. But everybody is being very helpful in solving the problem.
Thank you. Mr. Green, your budget update.
Yep. This evening, I'd like to report on the items that are on my report overview. Under curriculum, we met today, our content leader meeting. The meeting was focused on professional development proposals and also on the use of online professional development models. The one that was demonstrated today is PD 360, Professional Development 360, which is online professional development resource for teachers. They've been using it at the middle school for over a year. Carlene has made arrangements to have the middle school literacy specialist present to her staff again on Thursday. But it's a very cost-effective way to provide professional development to our staff. And it's been, again, it's been very successful at the middle school level. So we were encouraging the community school and high school to take a look at that model. Under safety, we, an update on the proximity access control systems that we're putting into the schools. If you've been at central office, you'll notice that the proximity card reader has been installed. It's actually the main system needed to be installed at central office. That's been installed, and it's working. I actually used it tonight. The high school, we were told that they would be finishing the install. Bless you. They would be finishing the install at the high school this evening. They were waiting for a few parts that were supposed to be done during break, but they needed to order a few parts. They also had to, they had some glitches with the initial install. So it kind of worked out that they did the central office first because they were able to figure out how to set up the remaining parts of the system. At the community school, in the middle school, what I found out is at the community school that originally that building was designed to have some type of electronic access. It was scrapped or put on hold at the last minute, probably for cost. But we believe that that, out of the four buildings, will be the easiest school to install the system. Whether we can afford to do it this year or look at the cost of installing that for next year is still yet to be determined. But all three schools, when it's said and done, there will be a main entrance, and people will be able to access the main entrance. But they will need to be allowed in when the second layer, the second set of doors, will be electronic, and they'll need to have somebody buzz them in. So our schools will be pretty much in lockdown or very secure from the very start, and we're hoping to get that installed as soon as possible. Under facilities update, Mr. Orr and members of his staff are in the process of completing a school facilities management system building condition survey. We needed to complete one of these for all of our buildings. The result of this will be either a low or a 0% interest on the interest rate for the potential bond in April. So we are hoping that with, by completing these surveys, we can submit them with our application and hopefully get a low interest, if not zero interest, 0% interest on our bond. But we won't have that information, the application's not due until, or the deadline isn't till the end of this month, and we're in the final processes of having that completed. Talked, met briefly with the architects last week. They are in the beginning stages of putting together some preliminary designs for the main entrance, the siding and the windows on the north side of the high school. They did have some concerns about the drainage where we had proposed where we wanted to put the high school or the new main entrance. But I talked with the town manager and the engineers. They have the equipment that can help us out, and they will be more than happy to go in and level that out for us. So that could be significant cost savings when we get to that point. They did provide a draft copy of the building application. The, there was a few things that were missing. The most significant at this point is the enrollment study that's incomplete, but we've asked to have that done, oh, Kathy, was it, a couple of months ago? Pretty close to a couple of months. I think they took three, four months the last time, but they should have it done well before the June deadline. So that's the last big piece of the application. But they do have drafts of that, and we're reviewing that and looking for any additional. They had a few questions that we needed to answer, but the actual building application is nearing completion. As for the budget, this evening, I do have, do have a couple of things to hand out to you. As most of you may have heard on the news, there is a couple of things that have changed since our last meeting. The preliminary ED 279 that was handed out in February has been updated. If you notice, the way that you'll be able to tell which form that I've given you, which one is the most recent, the date is on the bottom right-hand side. So the ED 279 that I'll be referring to from now on, or until I get another one, will be the March 4th one. In this one, as you know, the governor has added additional money into educational funding. This increased our subsidy by around $158,563. Another change has occurred since the last time we've met is that our, the MEA Benefits Trust rate notice came in on March 4th. And for next year, the insurance rate is going to be 2% for 2010, 2011. The difference, what we budgeted and what the actual cost would be, are estimated around $134,822. The last piece that I gave, that I will be handing out to you this evening on the pink forms, are updated copies of the warrant articles and the revenue sheets. One thing, this, the warrant reductions, the warrant articles still show a budget reduction of $1,105,270. The remaining difference that we have from the 1.1 million and what we anticipate to get to is 0% is now at $281,399, which is about $73,321 difference than what I reported to you the last time. Now, the reason why that number is not higher, it's because that the state has informed us that they will be using the same format that they did for the stimulus money last year, and they're requiring you to take the money, any stimulus money, out of your budget. And we are roughly between $250,000 and $300,000. So that's an additional $250,000, $300,000 that we would need to take, remove, somehow show that we've removed from our budget. So what we've done is we've put the savings and insurance and the retirement that you'll be notified of this evening. We've added that to that, to the stimulus, to the amount that we'd have to record as our stimulus reduction. So that was still, so overall, that will leave us short about $281,399 to get to the, to get to 0%.
Any questions or comments from anybody? Pete?
I know, I know you're doing everything you can, Rick. And don't get me wrong. This is not final, and until we get down to final, I'm not going to really make too much comment on it until we get ready to make the approval. Basically, what I'm trying to say, what I'm hearing from people, especially senior citizens, are telling me, if there's going to be a rate increase, tax increase over last year, they're voting no in the referendum. This is what senior citizen after senior citizen is telling me. Because anybody on Social Security got no pay raise this year, they're not getting any next year. And they say, you know, they're telling me if there's any tax increase at all. Because you know, last year, they voted, you had a 0% increase, and they voted to down last year. And the senior citizens are all telling me that if there's any increase at all in the tax rate, they're voting no. So I mean, I'm between a rock and a hard place. I'm just trying to pass on what I'm getting from, out of the seniors that talk to me. And I don't know what to say. I know we're cutting right to the bone. We're working at it, and I don't know where we're going to go from here. But I'm afraid that any increase is not going to fly when it goes to referendum. I'm afraid of that.
I just want to be clear that the $281,399 remaining, if we go any deeper than the 1.1 million that we have, then we would have to reduce programs and services.
I understand that.
Yep, I know.
I have a question. I'm sorry.
Let's wait until Pete is finished.
I just got one more.
Okay, I thought it was done.
Whatever budget this committee decides to support, whether it's a tax increase or no tax increase or whatever, I'll support it. Whatever the board decides on, I'll fight for. But I'm just making my concerns known to what I feel what happened last year at the referendum with a 0% increase. It gets voted down, you had to go back and cut, and what people are telling me. And I just wanted to bring that up, that's all. But I'm on board here to, I don't know what we're going to do. This is the thing.
All set?
I'm all set.
Okay, George?
Yeah. I was looking at the website today and said that, looking at the NES report stuff, and they were saying that a report was due to them on the 3rd.
Yep.
We get squared, squared, wait, I know that the principal isn't here, but I figured you'd be part of that.
Is this a budget-related question?
Yes, well, the NEAS report, it's March, it was due actually March 5th, and it was,
Facilities thing?
If you look at the, if you go on the facilities webpage, you'll see a copy of the report that we sent in. Yep. Actually, what is it?
I didn't see a copy of the report that you sent in the 3rd.
Yes, there's a, there's a copy of the actual report that we submitted to NEAS that I did it myself, so I know it's there. It's on the facilities page. So the latest response to the report that was due, I want to say March 5th, because Pete, you had to sign it. Pete, you had to sign it.
Yes, I signed it.
It was all, it was complete.
I just wonder if it did, because he was out sick.
No, we did it.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to comment on that. While I was, right after I signed it, the cover sheet, my signature was electronically sent out, right there in the oven, right then and there, so.
Amazing country, isn't it, with this technology? And you got to stay here. You get zapped right into that machine, sucked through the tubes.
So, so I know, I know it was sent out.
I have a comment.
Tracy.
Unfortunately, I can, I can sympathize with the people that are coming to you with your, with their concerns. However, one of the things that I find ironic is that we're always put under fire as a committee regarding the facility and not being able to do improvements, or not being, being said that we choose to not do improvements. But, over the last three years, our budget has not only been cut locally and by the state at both ends, leaving us no money to do any type of repairing or what, what have That it seems like there's never a good time. Every time we need, need the stuff to be done, it seems to be unfortunately in a time where there is no extra money, and people are cutting back and things like that. And I can understand that. I don't want my taxes to increase either, but I'm willing to do that because if we don't, we, we will wind up losing accreditation. Children will move out of the, families will move out of the district. Businesses will not even bother to look to come here. I mean, life has a lot of unintended consequences, and especially in the decisions that you make, and people need to think further down the road if things like this are not done now. We could be in some serious, serious trouble in the next five to 10 years. And I just, I, I, I understand it, but my, the reality of, of the youth in this town and their education just weighs heavy, more, it weighs my side a little bit further, so.
Kathy?
As a mother and on this board, I have to agree with Tracy. I finally have run into parents who are going to be there to vote. There's no more sitting back. They're going out to vote because they cannot see their children not have the opportunities in life. This is the time that they learn, they grow their future, and we're the only ones that can control that. I actually work for a lawyer part-time right now, and I was in the office while she was having a consult, and she was, said that she had found a trailer in Lisbon to move to, but all her friends said, "Do not go to Lis, do not take your children to Lisbon School." And that broke my heart, sitting there hearing that from this woman, thinking she's not going to move to that trailer because they're telling her kids not to go to Lisbon Schools. This is a great school. It's been cut year after year after year. A hundred dollars a year in taxes is not a lot of money to keep these children afloat, keep our teachers in place. I'm a person who lost their business in Lisbon already, and the more businesses that leave, the more your taxes are going to be floating away too. My husband's unemployed, and we're on a fixed income with four children. So, for me, it's the same, but I think it's time that Lisbon, the, the members of Lisbon stand up for the school. It's been too long and too far avoided.
I agree with all that they have said. I believe that the legislature and the governor, legislature has passed, and the governor has signed, or the governor may have proposed it, a program where seniors may put their houses into some sort of a program where, you're laughing?
Go ahead, I'm just.
Where they do not, their taxes don't have to increase at all, and they would only have to be paid after that person has died and the heirs are settling the estate. I think that's a decent arrangement.
Except the state owns your house when they get done.
Well, no, I don't believe so.
Oh, yeah.
No, I think they'll, when your house is sold, if the house sells for $375,000 and taxes are 10,000, then the 10,000 comes out. It is at least something for the senior citizens. And I'm a fan of Hollywood slots. Well, wait, let me finish my Hollywood slots story.
I'm, I'm waiting.
Okay. And you should see the buses unload and the elderly people with their walkers and their wheelchairs, and by gosh, they play all day, and I take a 92-year-old woman to Hollywood slots while I play the penny machines. She plays the quarter machines all the way up to the dollar machines. So, I don't have a lot of sympathy for the elderly. If they can go to Hollywood slots too, now, I don't know how many Lisbon people are going, but I dare say there are some, so I think it's... Did you want to say something else, Pete?
Mm-hmm.
Go.
This is the same governor and legislature that said four years ago, we've got to fund 55% of education.
Yes, absolutely.
They lie right through their teeth. And I don't, I don't, I won't make any bones about it. Until we get rid of this bunch of cronies we got up in Augusta right now, including the governor and all his henchmen, we're never going to have anything in this state. They're cutting homestead exemption, they're cutting tax rebate, and if you think that they're going to give senior citizens a break on their taxes, then I don't know what planet people are living on, because it isn't this one. Because this state will not going to give you anything, and that's for sure. And we need to wake up and smell a little coffee, because, you know, I'm, what I'm saying is, I know we need to keep our education up, and I know we need the money, but I am worried that we're going to have to come back and do this all over again. And I'm not, you know, I'm not saying we've got to take this out, let's go forward with it, as the superintendent's proposing, but let's not be shocked when it goes down the tube at the referendum. Because when you saw last year, a zero percent increase go down the tube, and, and they're saying, what's a hundred dollars a year in taxes? Well, when I was working, a hundred dollars a year was nothing. When you're taking medication that costs 300, almost $300 for one bottle for a month for pills, and it's other things that you have bills to pay, and you're on a fixed income with no raises coming in, and you don't know where the next dollar is going to come from, some seniors, not all of them, there's other seniors that's got money, I know of, that has money, but the majority of them, they're going to make a decision whether we heat the house this week or we eat this week. And I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm going to support the budget, and I'm going to support it, you know, heavily. And I, and I'm not against education, but we've got to realize that I don't think it's going to fly.
Thank you for your dire warning. Anybody else?
Yes.
George?
I'd like to say that, you know, it's, I think it's a matter of how we sell it to the people. Now, that school does need to be fixed, there's no getting around it, you know? That meeting that we're going to have with the townspeople, we could try to get as many of them in there as possible, you know? And, because it's true, if the school ain't accredited, people are going to start moving.
And I don't mean to be unsympathetic to the elderly and those on fixed income, but I think it's, it would be short-sighted of us and foolhardy of us to make, predicate all of our decisions based on the small group of people who would have a hard time paying their taxes, because there are people out there, as you said, elderly retired people who can't afford to increase their taxes. And I know people, some of them who have stood up to say publicly last year, "We want a tax increase." So, for us to, to go in with a zero just for a smaller group, I think that's irresponsible on our part, or would be.
I didn't recommend that.
Okay, but I know you were cautioning.
I, I agree with you too, but I'm also a family who's not on a fixed income, who has only half income coming in right now, and we're on plenty of medication with no insurance. So, we're in the same boat as the senior citizens, so, you know, I, I feel for everybody, I do, but the, my main focus is the children. They're, it's their future. They have no future. If, if everything goes the way this budget says, these children are going to be on the streets, businesses are going to fail, and it's not going to be good.
That's enough.
Okay, have we put a gun to that, the head of that thing? Maybe not. Public comments, do you finish, right, Rick?
I finished.
Okay, yes. Mr. Vero, would you go to the podium, please?
I have three quick things. First, I was, I get to go to the one I play, the high school attendant over in Wyndham, and I wanted to let everybody know, the school committee and superintendent, that Mr. Moreau represented Lisbon spectacularly, represented the main principals association, motivated the students, he did an awesome job. That's number one, I wanted to recognize that. We were very proud of him. I was wondering if you had any results from the budget survey, because the town hasn't posted on the, on the board.
I, I, at this point, I have no, I haven't heard. When I spoke to the town manager on Friday, numbers were, or the number of survey results were, were increasing, but I have not had any specifics shared with me yet.
And lastly, as a, as a resident of Lisbon, I see the, the budget predicament that we have this year, it was a little bit different from last year. And it's my feeling that it comes to a point where we have to draw a line on education and say, you know, these are our values when it comes to the education of our students. And, you know, if there's a tax increase, I'm willing to pay it.
Thank you. Other public, Robin?
I'd like to make the comment, Pete, that I don't think there are many families in Lisbon right now that are not a fixed income. No one is getting raises. Everyone's hours are getting cut. There are people that were working second jobs, second jobs are drying up. So, it's going to be a sacrifice for everyone, not just senior citizens, and it comes down to what everyone's priorities are, and our kids need to be a priority.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, thank you. Unfinished business, tentative adoption of the Lisbon School Department budget for 2010, 2011. And that is, Rick, as you have presented.
Correct.
Moved?
Make a motion.
Read. Seconded?
I'll second.
Jurgen, any discussion?
I want to say one more, one thing, and I just want to clarify something. I did not, when I said what I said before, I was not advocating a zero percent to go in. I was trying to inform you people of what was being told to me by senior citizens out there, and exactly what they were saying. I'm not advocating this going in with a zero increase, but I just was going out for informational purposes only, and they kind of give us an up, a heads up on what's coming down the road for people. I'm not advocating zero increase, I just want that to be known. I don't know why it got funneled that way, but it looked like it did get funneled that way.
You know you, Pete.
No.
You have a history.
If I was going to advocate a zero budget increase, I would advocate it strongly.
I want to know where you've been hanging out, taking your polo.
Oh, yeah, quite a few places.
I did hear you say, though, whatever it turns out, that we are a team, we stick together.
Yeah, we're a team.
I heard all that.
But, you made the motion too.
Yep.
Anybody else have any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, so signify. Five, zero, thank you, it's a vote. New business, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the fuel bid from Down East Energy for the Lisbon School Department. Moved.
Moved.
Austin. Seconded?
Second.
Jurgen, any discussion?
This is doing it with the town now, right? All together?
Uh, yes, this, this particular one, yep.
And they voted for that as well?
I'm not sure if they voted yet, or, yes, that's right, they did, last week.
Is your source for diesel going to be cheaper this year? Daryl?
Uh, no, I think everything's going up this year.
So, you can't cut any deals, so we'll take the diesel price that came in?
Yeah.
In all probability.
Cheaper this year through Down East or wherever they get their oil than it is at the local hub.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, so signify. Five, zero, thank you, it's a vote. Consideration of action to accept the resolution seeking fair, equitable, and transparent funding of education in Maine. Moved.
Moved.
Austin.
Second.
Seconded, Jurgen, any discussion?
It's about time.
Any, Pete?
I'm going to vote for it, but I'm doing it reluctantly, because I don't think they'll listen to us up in Augusta.
Well, they probably won't, but.
We've got to feel like we're actually going to try it. I mean, come on.
We've got to join these people. George?
They say 55%, okay? 55% of what the town, so they do 15% above what the town does?
No, that, the 55, the 55% of, is, is an amount, they paid 55%, not of 100 either, it's another amount. It's a really complicated formula that, that they've, it's not what, it's not what you think it is. I don't have all the numbers in front of me, but it's not, it's not what you think it is.
But, it's now down to about 43% is what the state is paying.
Right.
Of that magic percent.
Of that magic 55%. They have never reached the 55%, and they were working at it slowly.
And then started cutting it back.
And then they've.
But, the town's going to come up with the 45%.
Towns always had to come up with money.
Right, okay.
They don't pay us 100%.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right, ready for the vote? All those in favor, so signify. Four, those opposed?
He got five.
I was, I was going to go with.
You were late. All right, five, zero. Couldn't believe it.
We multiply that times two.
Okay, we have financial reports. Anybody want to pull them out? Kathy's hiding, but she might come up and answer questions. Anybody have a question? Ooh, Kathy, I think you're getting away easily. We have under, nobody wants to say anything, okay. Consent agenda, we have the official ballot specimen, 14 committee comments, any subcommittee reports?
Yes.
Kathy?
I went to my second annual, well, my second monthly dropout convent, I don't even know what we call it. Dropout committee? Yeah, dropout prevention. The group is small, a lot of people missing. Hopefully, they'll come one of these months, Mr. Karen.
Yes.
But, with these small people, these are very, very caring people, and I couldn't be working with a better group of people. I can name them, it's Sarah and Joanne Campbell and, well, he hasn't been there, but the other, the social worker. Yes. Very, very, very caring people. If, if you have a child in the system, you're very lucky that these people behind you. I'm reporting back on the statistics as of our last meeting, that 42 out of 85 freshmen are failing one subject or more at this point right now. And for sophomores, 69 sophomore students out of 123 are failing one subject or more. And the way the sophomores are going right now, they expect a mass exodus for the sophomore class by next year or their senior year. So, if you take, say, the 69 students times $6,000 for each of them, you're talking a lot of money. So, they've come up with some solutions, and I'm hoping that we'll bring them to the, well, they'll go to superintendent first and then the school board. But, one of the problems right now is the relation between some of these students that are dropping out and a few of the teachers. And I think that somehow, I would like to see a relation plan put in somehow with the teachers and the students, either the teachers, some of these teachers. I know they're worn out, they're working hard, they're working double, whatever, and their emotions are flowing onto their children, and next year, it might even be worse. So, I don't think any of us want to see this many students dropping out by their junior, senior year. But, I've asked Sarah if you would back me up a little, because it's all new to me, this process, so just the numbers alone got to me.
Right, yeah.
Do that much.
There were, there were quite a few things that came up in our committee meetings and in our committee meetings in terms of things that would need to happen in order for us to put together an alternative education model to actually start to get these students involved in something that, um, that would retain them, that would keep them enthusiastic about school. And a lot of the things that we talked about were things that will take a lot of research, a lot of planning, and some funding. Um, so obviously, those aren't things that we can do right away, so this is what prompted the discussion about what can we do now, what can we start now, what can we start doing as of tomorrow even, um, to start addressing some of these things. And when we started talking about some of the relationship building, um, I actually held a focus group with about twelve adult education students, um, nine of which were students who had gone to Lisbon High School at one point in their high school career. Um, and not all of them were, were newly dropped out, some of them are adults who actually left school a long time ago, and started the conversation with them about what are some of the things that, um, that led to the decision for you to not continue your high school program? Um, and overwhelmingly, the things that, um, I've been told actually over the, I started actually teaching, um, in, at the Lisbon Adult Education in two thousand six, um, and then became director in two thousand eight, so approximately four years of hearing these students' stories kind of culminated in this focus group. And a lot of that came down to, um, a feeling of alienation and, um, some missed opportunities, a really good, positive, and reciprocal relationships that can be happening in school. Um, and so we started talking about what can we do about that, and one of the things that came up was possibly looking into some professional development opportunities to start, um, helping teachers identify ways in which that they can foster those, those relationships between the students themselves, but also between the students and the teachers. So that's one thing that we came out of that meeting with. Um, and the other thing that we came out of that with, um, was the fact that at this time, the, um, the dropout procedure, when a student comes in and actually signs themselves out, or a, a parent comes and signs them out of school, at this time, um, they call it an exit interview, um, but it's, it's kind of a scant interview at this time, and there is not an administrator involved in that interview. So we also started talking about what can we do to, um, to kind of frame up that interview, that exit interview or exit counseling a little bit better, so that the students who are choosing to leave school, um, have a, a more informed, um, idea of what happens past that point, and possibly during that time, give them a little bit more information about how they can stay involved and not make that choice to leave school.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments or questions? I have a comment.
Sure.
Um, I am hearing, and I hope I'm wrong, I am hearing that it's going to be very easy to blame the teacher. And I hope we don't go there. Uh, I hope that, as a former teacher, uh, I know how hard it is to teach, and I know that I was an adult and I was a professional, and there were times that kids didn't agree with me either. Um, and there were times that there were major groups of kids failing. I think it may be worse now that there's a, a loss of acceptance of individual responsibility. Kids don't go to school for a teacher to give them a grade, they must earn it, they must earn it. But boy, what I'm hearing is a little bit of, it's all a teacher's fault, and I hope we're not gonna do that.
Absolutely not. When we talked about the relationship building process, it's about, um, creating a community within the school where even the students are having positive and reciprocal relationships with each other as well. And so when we're talking about some of that relationship building and some of that relationship repair kinds of professional development, it's also to train the teachers, um, or give them a little bit more information about how to create those communities amongst their students as well. So it's not about blaming the teacher, and it's not about taking some of the onus of that education, um, and the success off the student. So absolutely not, we wouldn't-
And how are you planning on putting this on the teacher? You're going to announce to them, you've got another, um, workshop to go to, to figure out how to get along with your students?
That's something that we're gonna have to explore as far as how that professional development process works with the teachers, because I don't know a whole lot about that, but it was something that came up in committee, is something to explore. So that's the point at which we are now.
In that network, I would also suggest that, uh, there'd be some type of communication with parent and teacher and parent and student, um, because I, I don't feel it all falls on the teacher and the administration, um, or the student. Um, there ha- there has to be that link of parent involvement, um, as well.
Yeah, we're not taking any of that out of consideration at all.
George?
I don't know, it seems to me that there's like a, they're, they're in LCS, they're doing really good, they go to the middle schools, they're doing really good, they get to the high school, is where it seems to be, I don't know, become teenagers and that's the problem?
Called adolescence.
Adolescence. I know we're all.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, parent involvement has gotta be involved there, I agree.
But a lot of the kids don't come from pa- parent involvement either.
Yeah.
So if it's up to the dropout community to try to find ways to keep them in school without the parents, because a lot of women, they don't have the parent.
Yeah.
And I don't wanna minimize at all in my comments, you know, don't put it on the teachers, don't blame them.
Oh, I think it's a wonderful teacher.
Um, I think it's, it's good what you're doing, what the committee is doing, and I commend you for that. And I do support alternative education, and would like to go someplace with that. It's not gonna happen, though, next week or by the end of the year.
Yeah.
I'm just saying to you-
Status is scary, though.
Be careful about announcing to teachers that, boy, you're screwing up.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, no.
Yeah, we're sensitive to that, it's, it's more of a community relationship.
I would be wild to, if you said that to me, or said that message to me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Um, new hires now, consideration of action to employ a substitute bus driver at Lisbon School Department for the two thousand nine, two thousand ten. I think you mean two thousand nine, two thousand ten, or two thousand ten?
No, two thousand nine, it's for the remainder of this year.
For the remainder of this year.
Yeah, we, we needed to create a, um, advertise and then hire substitutes. Um, it'll help us with, uh, re- reduce in overtime.
Okay. All right. Motion?
Make a motion.
Moved Reed, seconded?
Second.
Austin, any discussion? All those in favor, so signify. Five, zero, thank you. And Mr. Green will welcome.
Welcome, um, back, Ken Chase.
Thank you. Number two, consideration of action to employ a substitute van driver at Lisbon School Department for two thousand nine, two thousand ten school year or the remainder of the school year. Moved.
Make a motion.
Reed? Seconded?
Second.
Any discussion? George?
So now we got a new, uh, status of a driver now?
Um, we-
Van drivers?
Well, we need, because of, we have the new vans, um, we had to create a, a, um, job description, uh, talked with the LEA, and they approved, uh, job description and the posting, but, but it's something we, because it's, there's, there is an actual pay rate for substitutes, um, we needed to advertise and, um, fill those positions. So yet, yes, we do have, uh, because we have the vans now, we needed to create a new, um, substitute position.
And you have saved us major money-
I understand.
-by, um, taking the driver who was being paid umpty dollars to do the job, and now you have transitioned him to a van driver and negotiated a lower rate with him, so you've saved us money.
Yeah, we, we, we've saved money, but we actually use the money from the contract, which is ten dollars, um, per hour is what the substitute rate is. Um, bus drivers, if they have a bus driver's license, it's a, it's a higher rate, it's thirteen fifty-one.
Yeah, yeah.
But we're using the contract, and we, um, Amy's here, we worked with the LEA to, uh, to create, um, these positions.
But it is the same man, my point is-
Yes, it is, the same person, yes.
-the same man who had been driving the person in a private vehicle-
Private vehicle, yeah.
-getting mileage and hourly rate. No.
Hourly, they're just mileage.
Just mileage, okay. Um, getting just mileage, and, um, you have, in the process, managed to save us more money.
Yep.
Okay.
But other people still be able to drive those buses, so we don't have to have that person all the time.
No, these are just, these are just substitutes, these are just when we have people out sick, um, or, or we have trips and things, and, and this particular, the van is, uh, a person who, uh, applied to drive that, uh, work three hours a day.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All those in favor, so signify. Five, zero, thank you, it's a vote.
And I'd like to, uh, welcome Vincent Hess to our school system.
And Carol Manser, uh, grade two teacher at LCS is retiring effective the end of the year. Policy review, um, we need to, uh, we've done a first read, or should have done a first read on number ten, packet six, but we go to C, second read adoption on the following policies, policies, ten, packet five. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved Austin. Seconded?
Second.
Jurgen, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, so signify. Five, zero, thank you, it's a vote. And, um, the policies, we have new policies in our envelopes that we got tonight. Okay, now we are at adjournment. Moved Reed. Seconded?
Second.
Austin. All those in favor, so signify. Five, zero, thank you, it's a vote, and it is eight, nine.
I'm gonna move this.
Oh, that was a good, short, short.
Look, that's the official ballot.
Uh, so that was a good one.
Yeah.
Short, short.
Well, tell them I hope he feels better.
If we don't get the three fifty, then we wouldn't get the roof and stuff, the roof and the south side of the building, if we don't get that, front entrance and the windows inside. But what, this is money that's not new.
Yeah, I don't-
But if we don't get it, then we wouldn't be able to do the roof maybe this year. We'll have to look at it, we'll, we'll have to look and see how much new stimulus money we get. But that, this right here would, that would, that would cover the roof and some of the south side.
Behaved himself. And then at the end, outside.
I think you said, I, I talked to him about it, and he said that wasn't, he said that